Great, thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone, thank you. Thank you for joining us. This is the Township Council's regular meeting for February 23rd, 2023. This is a regular meeting of the Council of the Township of Montclair and is being broadcast live on Channel 34 and is streaming live on the Montclair TV 34 YouTube channel. It is available on demand and can and will be rebroadcast. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. The meeting was included in the annual notice of the meeting's schedule as set forth in Resolution R 21210 adopted by the Council at its conference meeting of November 15th, 2021, advertised in the official newspaper on December 30th, 2021, and January 6th, 2022, posted in the bulletin boards outside the municipal building and has remained continuously posted there. In addition, a copy of the revised annual notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Township Clerk. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of America, to the people, to liberty and justice for all.
A little late there, Robyn. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councillor Cummings.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Herlock.
Present.
Councillor Price Abrams.
Present.
Councillor Russo.
Present.
Councillor Schlegler.
Here.
Councillor Yakovales.
Present.
Mayor Spiller.
Present, thank you. In an effort to minimize exposure to COVID-19 and to maintain social distancing practices, this February 23rd council meeting and further meetings until the pandemic is over will only be available to the public remotely. We ask those who wish to participate now during public comment to dial into 408-418-9388. When asked to enter an access code, please enter 23364240740 and then press pound. When asked to enter an attendee number, simply press pound. When asked to state your name, please do so and press pound. The administrator will say when it's the caller's turn to speak. The caller will then hear two beeps. At that time, the caller will have an opportunity to make his or her comments. Mr. Stafford, Mr. Van, I turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First would be caller with the number starting 518755. It is your turn to speak, 518755. Please state your name for the record, keep your comments to three minutes, and mute your listening device. Moving on to caller with the number starting 973619. It is your turn to comment, 973619. Please, for the record, state your name, keep your comments to three minutes, and mute your listening device.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Amanda and I am an intern with the tenants' organization of Montclair. I've been connected to Ahava for about six years and I'm honored to be working with TUM for rent control in Montclair. I'm a graduate to Montclair High in 2016, also King University, and now a graduate student at William Patterson. Most of my family still lives in Montclair. Recent report rent control and the rent freeze, we ask that you extend the freeze until there is rent control implemented. Without this protection in place, there are tenants still facing unconscionable increases with leases ending March 31st. I assist in intake and tracking as well as a number of other important responsibilities to keep us growing and efficient. For the public, I would like to announce that the next TUM meeting in person and virtual is March 15th from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. Members only can join the virtual option, which is live with us from Trent Coffee and Tea House. Renters, owners, and property owners who support our efforts can just show up. You can join us, get the mix to your rights and offers to volunteer in many ways. Thank you for doing everything you can, everything you have been doing to help keep Montclair, New Jersey diverse and stable. Thank you for listening and have a good night.
Next would be caller with the number starting 646701. It is your turn to comment, 646701. Please, for the record, state your name, keep your comments to three minutes, and mute your listening device.
Hi, my name is Mary Packer and I'm the Executive Director of the Montclair Public Library Foundation. A recent article by researcher Nick Rizzo on the state of U.S. public libraries found that nationwide, libraries are more popular than ever thanks to a strong shift to digital materials and resources. There are more registered borrowers than ever, the total size of library collections are bigger, and overall use is higher. At the Montclair Public Library, more than 212,000 items were checked out in 2021 and over 92,000 electronic items were borrowed. While physical items are down in circulation since before the pandemic, the circulation of digital items continues to grow each year. Seventy-three percent of Montclair residents have an active library card. More than 100,000 visits were made to the library's website and more than 300 Wi-Fi hotspots were borrowed for home use in 2021. It is time to recognize that the public library is an essential service, one that is used across all age groups by citizens of all four wards and across all socioeconomic sectors of the Montclair community. The library is not a business but a public service. The benefits of a strong library system are well established. Libraries offer free educational resources to everyone, provide assistance with job searches and readiness, lead to improved literacy outcomes, offer resources for English-language learners, build stronger social connections, provide access to public health resources, preserve history, and our reliable information hubs dedicated to combating misinformation. The Montclair Public Library has endured two years of drastically slashed funding. While we recognize that the township is not generating the revenue of pre-pandemic times, it's time to take steps towards a return to normalcy. A host of short-term sacrifices were made by the library: staff furloughs, vacancies that went unfilled, and postponing or canceling purchases. But this cannot and should not be the new standard. The insufficient funding in 2020 and 2021 means that Montclair no longer has a fully functioning library. Instead, we are left with reduced hours, staff shortages, and the inability to purchase the new books and materials that are needed. The community is well aware of these impacts. The lack of materials and limited hours are a source of frustration and have led to statements both public and private from those who rely on the library. We understand that the library has made a request for more municipal funding this year than they received in 2021, but still well below pre-pandemic levels of support. This request represents continued sacrifice and belt tightening on the part of the library, but will restore a full schedule of operating hours. It's time for the whole council to demonstrate their support as they work towards restoring the library, to which role is the community center and resource for all. The fate of this treasured institution cannot be left in the hands of a few council members and town administrators who have tried to undermine it. We demand better. The council must provide-
Ma'am, that noise was your time concluding, so please do us the service of summing up your remarks.
The council must provide sufficient funding to fully restore staffing and operating hours in the 2022 municipal budget and must pledge to increase that support in 2023. I applaud those members of the council who have put time and energy into understanding the needs of the library over the last week and who continue to make a good faith effort to provide the community with the library services they need and deserve. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting 973985. It is your turn to comment, 973985. Please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device, and keep your comments to three minutes. Next would be caller with the number starting 973632. 973632. It is your turn to comment. Please, for the record, state your name, keep your comments to three minutes, and mute your listening device.
This is Irina Goldstein, Chair of the Montclair Free Public Library Foundation. I have reviewed the results of a public records request that the foundation served on the council seeking information regarding, among other things, the finance committees and the township managers' treatment of the library. In my opinion, these findings underscore that the budgeting process must take place in an open and transparent manner and with the full participation of the entire council and the Montclair community. As previously confirmed, the Finance Committee ordered the CFO to delay payment of previously budgeted amounts to the library until the library executed the library funding agreement. The Finance Committee had stated that the CFO's failure to pay the budgeted amount was due to a "misunderstanding." However, emails showed that the CFO and other members of the manager's staff intentionally slow-walked payments to the library and even used disparaging words when referring to the director. Keep in mind that while the manager's staff was delaying payments, the library director was worried about keeping the lights on and library staff paid. It is no wonder that Montclair lost our award-winning library director. We also learned that the township was in possession of the so-called forensic audit for months before it was turned over to the library trustees. Indeed, the township manager was instructed to delay turning over the audit to the trustees until the Friday afternoon before the Monday meeting between the Finance Committee and certain library trustees and the Tuesday council meeting when the Finance Committee mischaracterized to the public the auditor's supposed findings. Clearly, the Finance Committee was not interested in obtaining any feedback from the trustees on the audit's findings. The Finance Committee was only interested in using the audit as leverage over the trustees. Furthermore, the Finance Committee insisted on calling the audit a forensic audit while internally acknowledging that the audit fell far short of those standards. Indeed, we now know that the audit was based upon a draft budget when the actual budget was available at the time the audit was turned over to the trustees. While some may be tempted to disregard this as old news, the foundation is asking the community to continue its vigilance. We must not allow the past to be prolonged. The library is an important institution and we thank the residents and the council members who have spoken up for the library. Please don't stop because your voices, in light of the sad history that I've just summarized, are necessary to ensure that the library receives the funding that it and the community deserve.
Next would be caller with the number starting 973820. It is your turn to comment, 973820. Please, for the record, state your name, keep your comments to three minutes, and mute your listening device.
Good evening, it's Tony Martin with the tenants' organization. I wanted to call in about the importance of extending the rent freeze, that is to say, the freeze on rent increases. I know that we gave you, Ahava, our founder, gave you a very relevant example, and I have another specific example for you this evening of the kinds of things that have been happening and will happen in spades after the rent freeze expires if we do not have rent control in place. I spoke with a resident in December who had lived in a four-unit building, owner occupied. Her landlord gave her a $150 rent increase during the freeze. She was aware that this was illegal, but did not wish to fight this landlord who she characterized as bullying and intimidating and who lived in her building. And so she said, "Well, okay, I'll pay $100, but I'm not paying $150." And she came to us afterward to see what the process would be for recovering that money, which I don't really know what the process would be except for to go to court. So what I'm trying to highlight here is that we get these kinds of calls all the time and very concerned that the freeze be extended at least for a time, perhaps less than the usual three-month period, so that we can avoid sudden influx of increases for our tenants. Thank you so much. Good night.
Next would be caller with the number starting 862926. It is your turn to comment, 862926. Please, for the record, state your name, keep your comments to three minutes, and mute your listening device.
My name is Edward Robyn. I'm with the Montclair Library Friends Steering Committee. I speak tonight in support of full discretionary funding to the Montclair Public Library that will enable the library to reopen weekend and evening hours as it has in the past. And the budget proposed by the library to the council would allow the Bellevue Avenue Branch Library to reopen, to open 44 hours per week, more than it has previously. I will speak in more detail of the reasons for my support of increased discretionary funding for the library at the next council hearing. For the moment, I would request that the mayor or somebody on the council explain the procedure that the council plans to follow regarding the township's proposed 2022 budget.
Next would be caller with the number starting 973932. It is your turn to comment, 973932. Please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Hello, good evening. Are you able to hear me clearly?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. This is Ahava. I'm calling in tonight, President of the Tenants' Organization of Montclair. I'm glad to be on the call tonight. All things considered, why I'm on the calls and why all of us are on the calls for the Tenants' Organization of Montclair advocacy group with regards to rent control in Montclair and also currently the rent freeze. Hearing Tony's comment, I just wanted to just put it out there. Because we've had this happen to many tenants and it's been resolved even months ago where there were increases during the freeze, during the rent freeze ordinance, and that's a freeze on increases for those listening to the public who have not yet heard this. Legally, you can subtract the rent that you overpaid. Many tenants have been in fear of doing that or retaliation because of it, even though it's their legal right. Many tenants have not been in fear of that. So those who choose to want to call in, actually provide or give their stories or background on what happened, we always encourage that, but we do get these things on the inside that are not always just put out publicly. And these are members who are joining us and they may not always wish to have all of their information broadcasted. We appreciate everyone who does call in and writes in letters and says what's happening. Now, the legal fight against rent control in Montclair is a reprehensible letter to the editor from Mary Ellen Cluxton. Mary Ellen asked that we read her letter to the editor from January 24th of 2022. I'm going to work through this. This is from Mary Ellen and she is a member of the Tenants' Organization of Montclair and also an organizer and lead. "I have been a tenant in Montclair for 10 years and a renter all of my adult life. I am a registered nurse and although I am past retirement age, I am still working part-time throughout the pandemic so that I can afford to stay in Montclair and enjoy the many things it has to offer. I'm in a great location. I can walk to the shops and restaurants downtown as well as the Clare Ridge Theater without worrying about the very difficult parking situation in town. I know my neighbors and we have helped each other during this difficult time. I've been following the current rent control issue and I'm now working with the Tenants' Organization of Montclair to organize for fair and reasonable rent increases for all. I appreciate the mayor and Township Council passing and extending the rent control freeze and for their efforts in passing sustainable rent increases. As a senior citizen, the 2.5% rent increase cap would benefit me greatly and enable me to stay in a town that I have come to love. It is reprehensible that this ordinance has been bogged down in legal challenges by developers and property owners, as tenants were at the mercy of unreasonable rent increases when they are imposed, as we have seen in many buildings in Montclair. A fair rent-"
That noise was your time expiring, so please conclude your remarks.
I'll wrap it up and you guys can check it out in the Montclair Local. A fair rent increase ordinance would enable many of us to stay here and maintain the diversity that Montclair always prides itself on. The landlords and companies that would be included in the ordinance would still have enough revenue to maintain our building and make a reasonable profit." And that's from Mary Ellen Cluxton, and that was again in the January 24th, 2022, a letter to the editor of the Montclair Local.
I have a question-
Have a good night, everyone.
Felicia Dodd, if I can ask her a question? Sorry, maybe she hung up. Okay.
I can hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I wanted to ask Ms. Felicia Dodd a question. I was curious, I mean, you call every, you know, at every meeting, which I appreciate, and you always reference your tenants' advocacy group. How many, how many members do you have of your group?
We have over 500 members in our group.
And to become a member, what is the process of that?
So the basic process to become a member is to sign up at an event or call in, call in or email for an intake call. That intake call will take place by appointment, generally on a Thursday. Second or alternative day would be a Tuesday. It's based on the schedule of volunteers. More recently, I've had to have some recorded calls if there's not another volunteer available, like let's say during the day on a Thursday, and someone wants to do intake because we want to make sure that we're addressing the tenants' needs first. So everyone that calls in is not calling in just like, "I'm calling a volunteer." Half, half the people, more than half the people are calling in because they have an issue. And they're not ready to volunteer. They need something resolved. They don't know their rights. They just found out about what's going on. There's such a range of this. There are a lot of us. However, most people want their issue addressed.
Right, okay.
And we provide them with that information, but it is by appointment only.
Okay. And of the 500 people who are members, all of them are renters? Or are some of them just-
Not all of them are renters. We have a homeowners committee. We have a homeowners committee. Our homeowners have submitted their, their letter to the editor and they distribute as they can their letter throughout their neighborhood. So we have, there's seven active homeowners on our homeowners committee and they're featured. They've been pictured and see them on our, on our site, on our Facebook, and also on the literature that they've distributed because they did, they wrote a letter and they sent it to the editor. They should have also sent it to all of you. I should have it in our email. And this is from months ago. The homeowners committee found it a while ago.
Okay. But I just, my question was just, you have 500 members. Okay, thank you.
Next would be caller, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, I was just saying thank you again.
Of course. Next would be caller with the number starting 518755. It is your turn to comment, 518755. Please, for the record, state your name, keep your comments to three minutes, and mute your listening device.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. My name is Reiki Beal. I live in Montclair and I'm a member of the Environmental Committee of the League of Women Boters of the Montclair area. I don't need to tell you about the climate crisis we're experiencing and how important it is that we take quick and effective action on it. Before COVID broke out, a few members of our committee created this committee to reduce carbon footprint in our area. Now that COVID is declining, our environmental committee has been re-energized and we ask you to support our work as we act as nonpartisan educators and advocates for the environment to the benefit of the town. While our environmental committee has several important and urgent projects in the works, I'm particularly focused on two projects. One, as swap stalks and supporters of the Essex Hudson Greenway. And the other, as educators and advocates for improved recycling in our area. I invite the council members to support these projects for the benefit of our town and citizens. To end this message, I would like for you to think about measuring and creating a goal for reducing the carbon emissions of our town. A goal that is smart, and as you know, that means specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound. It would be great so that the whole town, hopefully in the future or near future, can celebrate reaching a goal of carbon footprint reduction. Thank you for the work you do and for the opportunity to talk to you. If you have any questions or need more information, you may contact the League of Women Boters of Montclair area website. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting 973396. It is your turn to comment, 973396. Please, for the record, state your name, keep your comments to three minutes, and mute your listening device. Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
Yeah, hi. My name is Robin Mazur. My name is Robin Mazur and I live at 79 Valley Road, Montclair, New Jersey. I live at 79 Valley Road.
Ms. Mazur, it might do you well to mute your listening device so that you're not hearing things multiple times.
I can't, hi. I'm not sure what I'm supposed to, anyway. I'll tell you what, I'll just turn off the TV. I'm sorry. I moved into, I don't know exactly what you're talking about there, so let me just try and turn off the TV. How's that? Is that better?
We can, we can hear you, yes, ma'am. Go right ahead.
I've lived, I'm a supporter and a member of TUM. I have, I had signed a new lease in April and I'm really hoping that you will extend the rent freeze for another three months. The landlords want me to raise my rent again 15%. I love living in Montclair and I had hoped to live here for a long time. I moved into my apartment in 2018 for $2,100 a month. I painted the apartment with their permission. I spent more money making the apartment my home. A year later, my landlords, Sam and Julie Park, raised my rent over 15% to $2,455. I signed the lease in April, a month before the freeze. The Parks has sent me a new lease during the freeze, raising my rent to $2,795, another 15%. When I mentioned the freeze, they told me they were not aware of it. 15% rent increase is greedy and it is unconscionable. My landlords do not, do no upkeep in my house. The driveway is in dire need of being repaid. The driveway is in such bad shape, I fall in twice this past year. When I asked if they planned on fixing anything, they brought in gravel to fill in the holes. The paint is peeling. They made it clear to me they don't care about the aesthetics, nor do they care about how the house looks. A tree fell down, partially destroyed the outside patio. It has never been returned, repaired. I'm a senior living on a fixed income and this is a hardship for me. I don't want to move out of Montclair. This is my home. Mrs. Park told me that my new rent is comparative to all the apartments in the area. I paid my rent every month on the first during the freeze, so being a good tenant and caring about their property and keeping them aware of whatever's going on in the house doesn't count for anything. These people are without conscience and they don't care about the renters. It's only about the money.
Ms. Mazur, that sound was your time- Ms. Mazur, that sound was your time expiring, so please conclude your comments.
Okay. Don't the landlords have any responsibility to the, to the renters? Don't, isn't it, um, their responsibility for the upkeep of the house? I don't understand how, uh, 15% is. Um, as a senior, the increase of 2.5% would allow me to stay in Montclair for a much longer time. Thank you, and I really hope that you will keep in mind all these people that are losing their places because of scrupulous landlords. Thank you for listening to me, and, um, I hope you'll seriously consider the need for rent control in our town.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you for, uh, I'm sorry. Thank you for calling, and, and I'll just note that, uh, uh, two, two separate pieces we'll, we'll say first, the, around the uncontrollable rent increases, uh, you know, where they're with you. We, we, we passed the rent control ordinance. We've been working to get it in effect, and, uh, I know there's broad support for it. So we will work to make that happen. You, you did raise, though, that you're running into, or is there upkeep or some other, you know, basic principles that need to happen? Um, the answer to that is, um, yes, you know, depending, of course, on, on specifically what you're referencing, uh, but we would encourage at any time just to reach out to the township. Uh, Mr. Stafford, who's on here, will direct the call appropriately to code enforcement or whoever, whomever else is appropriate, depending on, again, what you share. Uh, but the short answer is there are standards, absolutely, that have to be, um, uh, up kept, uh, in, in terms of upkeep. Um, but, uh, you know, on the, on the, uh, rent increase side, the, the, the uncontrollable cost increase side, we're, we've worked on that. We're continuing to work on that. We're going to continue to fight for that. On the upkeep side, that, that is the law in many instances, or depending on what you're saying, and Mr. Stafford, uh, and township staff can help with that. So please just, uh, reach out anytime.
I would, if I may, uh, sorry, Mr. Stafford. Uh, yeah, just augment to what the mayor was just responding, that we had the landlord tenant advisory committee, uh, which we can sit, you know, you can make an appointment to sit down and, and have, uh, what, what the law is explained to both parties, uh, not giving legal advice per se, but, but simply making sure that all the parties understand the status of the law, um, if there are things out of compliance. So that's an option to consider, and you certainly may have heard Representatives of the Tenants Organization of Montclair, which also try and support tenants in their interactions with landlords. So encourage you to, again, follow up with the township in those ways. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting 919-699. It is your turn to comment. 919-699. Please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Danielli Wata. I'm a member of AAPI Montclair, and I'm calling to ask you to support Resolution R-22-041 to support the New Jersey Reparations Task Force Act. AAPI Montclair recently joined the statewide coalition in support of this because it's an issue that is important for us as a community and for me personally, as someone whose family received funds after a commission was formed to study and ultimately recommend redress for Japanese Americans who are unconstitutionally incarcerated during World War II. So we know reparations are possible because it happened for our community, and we feel an obligation to advocate for this. Um, this process is so critical in educating New Jerseyans and Montclarians about the deep and often forgotten history of slavery and its aftermath of structural racism. And it's so important in beginning the process of repairing that harm. Uh, California recently became the first state to pass a reparations task force legislation, so we really hope New Jersey could be the second. And likewise, the city of Newark recently passed a resolution in support of it, and we hope that Montclair can join them. So, um, thank you so much, and I hope that you'll be supporting this resolution.
Uh, thank you for reaching out in that regard, and certainly, um, being someone who's, uh, who's openly supported in the past, and, and I know along with some of my colleagues attended rallies, uh, including in Newark in support. Um, you know, certainly, we, we hope we can move this forward as well, but thank you.
Mayor, there is no one else in the queue.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, I appreciate everyone's comments, uh, on, on, on all the pieces and calls. Uh, moving forward, we have a number of items which are on the consent agenda. Of course, they've been reviewed previous meeting as such. Um, ISO move items one through 15, when noting items five through 11 are withdrawn. ISO move.
Second.
Smoothed and seconded. Uh, Madam Clerk, please.
Counselor Cummings.
Yes.
Counsel, Councilwoman Price Abrams, did you have a, these are consent agenda from the last one. Did you have a?
Yeah. I, I do have a question to the extent that I thought that items five and 12 had been withdrawn from.
That's, that's correct. I, I didn't, I didn't hear correctly what the mayor said. You're absolutely right. Uh.
But, but.
Counselor.
I'm just clarifying. It, it's items.
Did I say a different, did I say a different number?
One through 15, not five, not 12. Those were withdrawn.
Okay. I think we mean the same thing. Uh, Mayor, you, you may have suggested that other things were withdrawn that are just there on this agenda.
I apologize. I thought I said this, I thought, I thought so, I said, but thank you for clearing. Thank you for restating.
All good.
Thanks. Uh, all right. Smooth seconded. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Cummings.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurlock.
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams.
Yes.
Counselor Russo.
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel.
Yes.
Counselor Yakabelis.
Yes.
Mayor Spiller.
Yes. Next is Resolution R-22-041, which is a resolution endorsing the enactment of, uh, uh, endorsing the enactment of Assembly Bill A-938 and S-386, which is the New Jersey Reparations Task Force Act, and ISO move.
Second.
Smoothed and seconded, and I'll, I'll just start off with the comments and note, as I said before to the caller, certainly, I think, long overdue, this legislation going all the way back to 2019, and of course, has been reintroduced in the new session. Um, but, uh, again, as the caller noted, establishes a task force to look at the issue and to make recommendations to both the legislature and the governor. And certainly, it is something that I know, uh, in broad spaces has been called for, um, and, uh, about time that it is looked at. So smooth and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments?
Question?
Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, uh, I see. Hold on, hold on one second, Mr. Uh, uh, Councilman. I see Councilwoman Schlegel, and then you are next, and then Councilman Russo.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mayor, um, and, and my colleagues. I, I don't under, uh, uh, we got, I got this, um, got the email about this resolution late this afternoon, and, and I haven't had a chance to read it, uh, nor do any research on it, and so I don't under, at this time, I don't, I don't understand, wh, wh, who, what's the makeup of the task force and what is the task force? Um, I wish I had more time to look at this, but, because it is very important, but I really don't, I haven't been able to read it. Like, you know, like, it, it was a crunch time. And so wh, where is, is the task force being formed at the state level, the national level, the town level?
Yes, uh, thank you, Council. It, it's a, it's a legislative, so it's the Senate Assembly and move forward a bill to do this. Um, aga, again, going back a couple of years. Um, but the task force specifically, it's going to be, uh, it's at the state level, right? The governor appoints, uh, two individuals. Um, the legislature appoints eight individuals, the Senate president appoints an individual, the Senate minority leader appoints an individual, the speaker of the Senate's, uh, and the, and the minority leader of the General Assembly, uh, appoints a member. So those are all the members of the task force. Again, that's a New Jersey task force. They are charged with looking, um, at the issue of reparations, right? So the individuals, uh, who, uh, um, you know, are on that task force are going to look at, uh, the issue of slavery. They're going to look at, um, the challenges that, uh, African Americans have faced, and then, of course, come back with a report, two reports, one due one year out, 12 months from the formation of the task force. Um, they report back and, and the final report, uh, no more than, I should say, 24 months, uh, after the law would be enacted. That's the composition, and that's the goal, and it's made up, uh, and it's a New Jersey task force.
Okay. All right. Um, and I guess that's in, I haven't read the resolution, so I guess that's all in it. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Russo?
Yes, I just want to say that I'm very supportive of this, but, you know, we also got it late. I, I don't know how that happened, but I just saw it today. And, um, you know, I would like to, to do some more, um, discussion with, uh, AAPI and others, but I do support this now. What I want to make it clear is that all the groups that got help from the government over the years, I think AIP had talked about how some reparations were paid to Japanese families that were interred. There were also Italian families interred during the Second World War. There were also, uh, things done throughout our history that are really unfair. But it's, it's time to have this commission, not just research it, but to do something. So I'm all for having the commission. I'm going to support this. Um, I've been aware of it for a while, but I just want to make sure we get things, you know, straight with, with sending things to us the last minute, which Counselor Schlegel is pointing out. I mean, I just found out about it really, I, I started to read this message about 6:00 PM. Seemed to have come in from the town attorney's office earlier, but, and I think it's the AAPI folks who actually got it to me. Just want to make sure we get things early enough to be able to, to vote on them, you know, with, with, uh, full knowledge and, uh, information. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I too have concerns, uh, echoed by my colleagues. We, we seem to be getting stuff at the last minute. I don't know why. That's not the way we operated the last eight years. Um, I haven't had a chance to look at this either. I've been at work all day. So, um, I'd like to know more about it. Uh, I, I want to thank Councilman Yakabelis for reaching out to me when I raised a couple of questions earlier. But, and I, I always have concerns about resolutions in general, but, um, here, I, I just didn't get the stuff soon enough, so I'm going to be abstaining on this one. That doesn't mean, ladies and gentlemen, that I have, I'm passing on it one way or the other. So don't email me or call me. It's literally, I just got this an hour ago to be able to look at it. I haven't had enough time to look at it. I'm funny that way. I like to read things before I vote. That's where I'm coming from. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, thank.
Councilwoman Cummings?
Hmm?
Does anyone else hand raise before me?
You, you were, I saw the finger go up, so you got it. You're, you're next.
Um, I think I want to give some clarity. I know, uh, Pastor Anya from, uh, the UU reached out and had support from local clergy, as well as NAACP. I think the AAPI email we got today was, you know, the latest, um, group to support this. I think it's also, um, an area that, uh, this council should consider that, you know, the, the, the resolution speaks for itself in terms of four million African Amer, or many Africans who were basically enslaved over time came here. And I think there's a movement, uh, on the state level to create this task force to look into it. Um, we in Montclair, um, as some of the callers said, pride ourselves on diversity and pride ourselves on supporting those who need help the most. And I think in this particular case, that's all we're doing. And we have had multiple resolutions come to us late, over time, and, uh, I do think, and do have a sensitivity to Counselor Hurlock because he's been consistent in a concern about that. But there have been times when things have come through us late, and we've passed them or we've moved on. There have been times when I've had some issues with it, but I think this one, um, has local support from organizations that all of us support, um, over time, and I think it's something that we should pass. And I also think the fact that we are heading into, we are really seeing the last week of Black History Month, um, makes this even more appropriate to pass in, um, this resolution at this time. So those, those are my comments, and I hope my colleagues can see through that.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, and, and I appreciate Mr. Cummings' comments, and, and I value his opinion, and we've worked very well together. We've been alone on a lot of votes. Um, but David, I've also abstained on the late ones as well, so I'm consistently on, on this page, just so that we're all on the same page. I'm not singling this one out, and I don't want it to appear that way. But, but when they come late like this and I have a chance to, to read them, I, I abstain.
Yeah, I thought I made it clear, Mr. Council, Deputy Mayor, that, um, you've been consistent in that area.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Price Abrams?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I will say I did read the, um, resolution itself, which is quite thorough. Uh, it's not even the full legislation that I had the opportunity to read, but it does, I think, draw upon a lot of the language from the bill. Um, and the most important point perhaps is that, uh, what it does is the legislation, that is, is it creates, um, an opportunity to study and develop proposals with regard to reparations, so it's not actually to enact any, uh, particular things. I think, you know, a legacy of slavery is something, it's, 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 we can't quantify what, what that would be, and I don't know that these are all about dollars. I think from the bit that I read, um, uh, first of all, they are only going to be recommendations so that can then be given proper consideration as to what may be passed as policy in the future. Uh, so in that way, I feel comfortable to lend my support to this, um, tonight. But, but I, I would think, if from what I read, that there are also creative ways that we give it through education, through understanding, through other kind of pathways that may, in the broader sense, um, again, not be, uh, limited to monetary reparations, but other, other means. And if Mayor, if you know more about it, or Counselor Cummings, uh, maybe just lend a little more detail there would be helpful.
Sure. I'll share a little, a little more there in the space, and, and, and again, maybe a little more familiarity in that on the education side, uh, we have openly supported this and, and support the bills, right? So, and I think that is because of exactly what you said. It is a comprehensive look, um, at reparations and what exactly that means. We know education is a huge part of anything. If we're going to move forward, um, yes, and acknowledgement and healing, and of course, to, to doing better into the future, that's got to be a component, but it is to look at everything. I think you noted that. Again, remember, uh, as, as Councilman just noted, it would be to come forward with potential recommendations. Um, that is why it does report to the legislature and to the governor, and, and of course, the whole state apparatus, um, so that they can look at what they would then consider, um, with some guidance from the task force. So you, I think you, you pretty much, you know, you, you, you got it, you got it, what it says. So that's right. And, and I just note to, to the Councilman Cummings, I think it's, um, certainly, uh, something to note as we are still in Black History Month, and, and certainly even as Councilman Russo noted, um, we all do, you know, talk about pieces a lot of times, and, and hopefully pushing to, to them to take some action would be certainly more than appropriate, uh, uh, you know, at this time. Uh, Councilman Yakabelis?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. I'll just comment. I did have the opportunity to go and read the legislation this afternoon, so I'll be supporting it, but I do would just want to be sensitive to, are we setting up our colleagues to, you know, take a vote that they're not ready to take? So I just want to be sensitive to that. So if there's, you know, I, I don't know the, the timeline of the state is considering this legislation, and I respect and appreciate, obviously, the timing with regard to Black History Month. But I just wonder if, if a couple of our colleagues, you know, just need time to read the legislation that accompanies the resolution to understand what's in it, um, and that would get them to yes, and we can have a unified vote on this. Um, we have a council meeting in six days. You know, I'm, I would propose that we, you know, just put that on the table to consider. I don't know if anybody would want to, uh, make a motion for that.
That's very kind of you to say, um, Councilman Yakabelis. You know, I, 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 um, you'll, I take this job very serious. I, I work every day till four o'clock. I got home at four, 4:30 to six. I was on an EDC meeting with you, Mr. Yakabelis and the mayor, Mr. Burr. Um, and this resolution is six pages long. It's a very serious resolution. It's, um, it's not something to take lightly, and, um, and I would like to, to read it. It's, um, six pages is, is, is a lot for, to digest. So, you know, in one hour, which I would have done between six and seven, but wasn't able to do. So, um, you know, I, I, I will do whatever my council colleagues want to do, but, um, you know, it's, I, I would have to abstain at this time because I don't think it's fair of me to not to read it and, and digest it and take it as the seriousness that, that it necessitates. So, thank you.
Councilman Russo, I saw you trying to say something again.
Yes, um, you know, I really appreciate what's being said, and I, as I pointed out, I got it very late, but now I've been reading while we're in our meetings the best I can. The most important thing I read, though, is the AAPI statement in support of this, and I take very seriously what AAPI asks us to do. And of course, Counselor, uh, Cummings is pointing out the strong support from the large African American community here and the religious community, clergy. Reading this by AAPI makes me so strongly supportive of it. I don't want to see us delay this because when they point out the relationship between the, the Japanese community and what President Roosevelt did in the incarceration of 120,000 Americans with Japanese ancestry, and then finally, our government, you know, after so many years, apologized and authorized payments of 20,000 each to formerly incarcerated individuals. Well, we have a lot to do to make up for what's happened to African Americans throughout our history. And, uh, you know, I, I just want to see us make this statement. I, I felt it was bad that we got this so late. I just don't like to be blindsided and surprised, just as my council. bad that we got this so late. I just don't like to be blindsided and surprised, just as my council colleague said. But I hate to see us wait. And I know people should not interpret anything that somebody does in in abstaining because they didn't get a chance. They should not be seen as a, you know, an opposition vote. But I really strongly support this, and I want to thank Jeffrey Chang and AAPI for sending me this because there's a lot to be done and there's not much time to waste. And African American History Month is just about over, but there should be African American history period, as many people have seen the the message I sent out recently. African American History Month should not be the only month we deal with this issue. It's African American history that is a problem for some people to understand. It's a really American history and these crazy states that are trying to abolish discussion of this history and the history of slavery. And we just had a forum on Amistad Commission. For many years, Congressman Payne's brother, Bill Payne, who was an assemblyman years ago, who fought and his family lives in Montclair, who fought very hard to get the Amistad law passed just to require some sort of history teaching in our schools of what happened. And, you know, it goes back 400 years. So I don't want to wait another day. And I just feel sympathetic to the idea of maybe waiting a week, but let's not wait till March to do something we should do in February if we can. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock? Councilwoman Price Abrams?
Yes.
Councilor Russo?
Yes.
Councilor Schlegel?
I'll have to abstain.
Councilor Yakabelis?
Yes, but I'd like for the press and public to recognize that my colleagues who are abstaining are only doing so because they didn't have enough time to read the resolution and the legislation at the state level that the resolution supports. And I respect that. And I just hope that no one is characterized as not supporting this. Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Yakabelis. I appreciate that.
Thank you as well.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, that does conclude our agenda. I will go over to Mr. Stafford.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing for me tonight. I wanted to point folks to the township's website's homepage. And under latest news, our communications director has pointed important information for residents with respect to a program that may be available to them if they are of a certain income level to reduce or avoid costs associated with high utility bills. The governing body, as well as the Environmental Commission, has put forth this information with respect to the New Jersey Comfort Partners Program. This is a free program that would help Montclair residents save energy and save money on utility bills. Savings could be had by way of repairs or ameliorative action with respect to replacement of inefficient appliances or thermostats, working with efficient lighting products, replacement of items as big as refrigerators, et cetera, and the income level to be able to or eligible to participate is significant. It's, it's, one must be at or below 250% of the federal poverty guideline. So I urge folks to take a look at the township's website on the homepage. Under latest news, you could click on the icon and see all of the information. And there are contact numbers and further links to put those interested in touch with folks that can direct them for more information. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Certainly a great program that we have there. And I know we talked about that type of thing along with our energy aggregation program. So certainly appreciate to see those dollars able to go there to help. And of course, everyone to assess the home and those who need the financial assistance to do so. Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Scantleberry?
No comment, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's see, township attorney?
Nothing this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Deputy Attorney?
Nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I have no report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Cummings?
Yeah, following up on the manager's statement, I think residents should definitely go to the town website to look up the water bureau's line on the lead pipes. Folks, this is something that's going to impact the entire township. And I think you need to make sure that your pipes are what you need. It's something that came to us, I think, a couple of weeks ago, but it's statewide. And the information on there can really help you to understand what you're, what you need to do to make sure that you are, either you need it or you you may be good. So I think that's the only thing I have today, Mayor.
Sir, Councilwoman Price Abrams?
Honestly, tonight, I'll save it for next time. Thank you. Everybody have a good week.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next, Councilman Schlegel.
Thank you, Mayor. To piggyback on the lead pipe issue, I want to give a big shout out to Gary Absarny for the amazing work that he's done on this. The extensive information that's on our website is very impressive, and it's a very important subject. There's this incredible list of every address in our town and and the and what kind of pipes people have in their, in their homes. It's, it's quite a lot of information, and I urge everybody to go on the website and look up their address of their apartment building or their, their home. I also want to, I wasn't able to make it. I was out of town, but I'm very happy that the Wachong playground is up and running at Wachong School. I know that many of you were there at the ribbon cutting. I saw the video and saw the photos, and I'm very pleased that the Board of Ed and and the Montclair High School, I know that their athletic department was instrumental with the field there. And I'm so pleased that it's, that it's up and in full swing, so to speak. And, and that's all. And I just hope it doesn't snow too much on Friday after being 60 degrees today. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I think we're all up in that, too. And certainly you were missed at the playground ribbon cutting. But I think we, you certainly were acknowledged and any, you know, the superintendent went out of his way to 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 thank you. So it should be noted and board president. But but it was, you know, a wonderful, wonderful ceremony, certainly, and to see all the kids there just having a good time playing around us as as we, you know, we're cutting the ribbon. But I know they had a fun time, too. So it's nice to see those things getting done. And certainly, as we all know, in this difficult time of a pandemic, you know, these open spaces for for kids especially, but all of us to be out there and to have some fun are so important. So glad to see that project, you know, kind of come to completion there. And I have the space, almost completion, and they're extending even for the, the the playground space, but even good stuff. So thank you.
Did you finally convince Raphael?
Yeah, so she weren't there, Councilwoman, but I did have a young gentleman, Raphael, who who was looking at the deputy manager and I and was was trying to, you know, say who was mayor. And of course, needless to say, Raphael went with Mr. Scantleberry here, who's his new best friend. But by the end of it, I did, you know, use, literally use the bully pulpit to hopefully convince him that I was the mayor by by standing there. But it was, it was, it was fun, though. They had a good time.
That's very sweet.
It was fun. Mr. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, I know we had touched on this last week, but I didn't get a chance to speak to it, but I would be remiss if I didn't thank Derek Frazier-Mill and his legal team at Riker Danzig, the firm that helped us with the redistricting issue. I had been asked by some of the administrative staff to take a look at this and knew about Derek and his firm and their expertise. And we selected the right people for the job, and I thank them for their help on this as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you, and certainly appreciate it. Next, Councilman Yakabelis?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll just mention a couple of quick things. On traffic safety, which has been obviously a really hot topic and traffic calming around the town. And thank you, Deputy Manager Scantleberry, for sending all of us to report on the traffic studies and to the police department for conducting so many traffic studies. I know we have in our possession the results of 52 studies that have been completed, that were completed in 2021 and where there are currently eight outstanding studies. So I'm going to be, I'm going to be putting that out, that information via a newsletter probably next week at some point. Deputy Mayor Herlock and I are working on a resolution to go to the county to advance a traffic light project at Mount Hebrun and Valley Road and some other points there for traffic calming at that critical intersection. And Councilor Schlegel and I are working together as well on a resolution for the next meeting for asking the county to look, revisit Wachon Plaza and particularly the intersection of all those streets there at the plaza. And, you know, just want to continue to work with all of you on the many, many, many requests that we're getting from all over town to look at intersections, traffic calming measures, safe streets components, to see what we can do. At the end of the day, I've been looking at just some of what the macro drivers of this are. Meaning, not meaning drivers literally, but a lot of it has to do with Gen Z and being the most distracted driving generation ever. And many more people driving during the day. As a result of working from home and having hybrid schedules, people aren't just going somewhere and being there for the whole day. There's a lot of transient back and forth appointments during the day. People are mixing and mingling their errands with their work schedules and their home lives. And so there's a lot of, there's just different traffic patterns as a result of the pandemic as well. So I think there's just some interesting macro issues that are driving, that are not unique to Montclair, but that are creating a lot of the anxiety and interest in this issue overall. So looking forward to working on some of the micro solutions and then some of the bigger picture solutions. I've been able to speak with some of you. Not all of you. Going to continue to call you and talk with you over the next couple of days just in terms of the mask mandate to see how everyone feels and to make a recommendation next week. I did speak with Deputy Mayor Herlock, with Councilor Schlegel, Councilwoman Price Abrams, Councilor Russo today to get a sense. Councilwoman Cummings and Mayor Spiller, I want to speak with you as well as soon as possible so we can figure out if we want to sunset the mask mandate sooner than it is planned, which right now it's planned to expire on March 31st. Sensing, I'm getting a lot of requests from the business community in particular for us to consider having that expire sooner. And so I want to discuss that with all of you and then make a move on this next Tuesday. And then lastly, I'll just mention also on rent control, you know, I continue, as all of you do, to have conversations with the tenants, organization reps from there, reps and the property owners. I just want to, you know, what I'm, we're so close to compromise. And I really, really just hope we can avoid a referendum on the issue if we can. I can't unsee what I've seen in 97% of points at this point being agreed upon. And what do we mean in terms of including two and three family homes that are non owner occupied, ensuring we've got rent control, rent stabilization for the majority of renters in Montclair? The simplification of the administration of the rent control law in terms of record keeping and how we actually administer and the functions of the board. Lot of really good work that both sides had done to get to a compromised place on so many of the points that it would be a real shame to have that be set aside and for the public, in my opinion, to have to vote on the other version, which frankly is not as good as the compromised version, I think we're looking at today. So my hope is that we could advance the compromised version. We can broker a compromise on the final outstanding pieces and avoid a referendum. Thank you.
I could tell you now, you don't have to call me about the mask mandate. I'm all for eliminating it as soon as possible.
Thank you, Councilor.
Councilman Russo?
Yes, I'd like to say I also support ending it by, say, March 1st, a week from now, maybe a month earlier than we thought, because this is happening all over. I hope it's not premature that people are taking the guard down. As individuals, you need to still protect yourself. I'm wearing that mask almost everywhere. But it is something that I think we need to do for our businesses. Our small businesses are suffering. We imposed something like this when we saw everything increasing again with this new variant, but apparently things are going much better than we thought. Let's hope this is the end of the big, big wave of problems. But I think everybody has to be conscious that this is not going away, that this is going to be something that's around as an endemic, you know, a problem. We should do what California's governor's done and ask everybody to still be very vigilant and protect themselves, their children. But I'm all for by next week getting it off. Also, I wanted to say with the comments by Councilor Yakabelis, you know, it's true that there's a compromise that was kind of reached, but it's the tenants that gave so much in their negotiations to those who have the, well, property owners is one thing, landlords, something. But there's a group that's come into Montclair that I have to keep bringing this up, okay? Because I'm very practical about this. We can get to compromises on 90% of issues. But if somebody doesn't want to really get this done because they like to see conflict, and I've seen it in Asbury Park with the deputy mayor putting forward a resolution that was moderate like ours. The town tenant people really, really fought it and wanted to see something stronger. It was defeated by the residents. Now, the the people who somehow supported the Asbury Park Council people are attacking them. The same gentleman we have here attacking us continually. He's attacking the deputy mayor of Asbury and the Asbury Council because they'd like to make some changes to strengthen their ordinance and protect tenants a little more. Remember, rent control is there to protect tenants, who you hear from all the time coming here. There's really thousands of them that have problems. We only hear dozens of them, and we hear their leadership. And this is really terrible. When somebody gets hit with 20% increase, 50% increases, and then they're told also, well, this thing is all over, you know, we can increase you now. This is still a freeze, and we still have rent control waiting in the wings to be implemented. And so I would like to say that, yes, I want to see a compromise. I've been encouraging both sides for a long time. But I think the problem is the side of this law firm and the gentleman who comes up, and he's in Neptune, where I also go a lot in the summer. In Neptune, he's disrupted them for years. They have a wonderful rent control ordinance in Neptune. I just want to tell everybody again. I studied this for years since I was mayor. Neptune has something that's really great. It has a great board. It has a former council member who chairs the board. They take complaints. They resolve them. Everybody's happy. There's a nice brochure that goes out. It doesn't satisfy everyone. But there's no real conflicts of people calling the council meetings and coming in every week complaining about the problems that we hear about. This Montclair should be able to solve this. And it was almost solved, and the mayor and I and others have worked on this very hard. So I really like to see us put the blame where it belongs. We're not here just for a blame game, but let's get this done. Or let's just get the residents to have to vote on it and decide, you know, we, we implement what we have, and then we can change it. We can always improve it. We can tweak it. We can make it better. So I'm appealing to everybody to work together, but I also want to make sure people who've not been here too long on the council understand how many years have gone by with the fight that we went through. Councilor Baskerville was involved, Mayor Spiller, myself on the council, Councilor Herlock, Councilor Schlegel. We passed something, the best we could do. And we can improve on it, but there's some people who don't want anything, really. They say they want something. They say they want to work with us. They really don't. So that's my message tonight. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to intervene, and I do respect and appreciate that you have the opportunity to speak. I just want to be mindful that we are, this is a matter that's still in litigation, and we just have to be mindful of that as we're speaking about the rent control ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. I just get carried away. One last thing I want to say, Mayor, of the group, I talk about Asbury and Neptune a lot because I go down there. But it's Porta, the new restaurant that's opening up at the old social club, which was also Old Rascals on Bloomfield Avenue across from the the Claridge Theater. But they're coming up. They're trying to open Friday. Let's hope it's not going to be too snowy. But they have a wonderful restaurant down in Asbury, close to the Boardwalk. And we welcome them here. I want to say welcome to them to Montclair. My wife just loves their food. It's much more than pizza. So I hope they have a successful opening here in Montclair Friday. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Yakabelis?
Mayor, I think, you know, just after the the dialogue and hearing from Councilor Cummings in particular, I think I'm prepared to make a motion tonight to rescind Resolution R 21 267, which was the indoor mask mandate for Montclair effective March 1st. And I want to thank Deputy Mayor Herlock for being my partner in the very beginning on this. And I want to thank Deputy Mayor Herlock for being my partner in the very beginning on this and crafting it and getting it put before you and your support, Mayor, and the specifics and everyone's support for uniformly supporting it at a time when cases were alarming us and we were pretty scared and frankly going it a little bit alone. And what we saw was while we had a draft, Newark took the action and did it, and many cities followed our action. And I think we demonstrated really responsible behavior. But I do feel at this point we're at a point where we can responsibly sunset this. So I would like to make that motion to rescind Resolution R 21267, the indoor mask mandate, effective March 1st.
I'll second that. I guess, I guess there's a lot of us seconding.
Excuse me, Mr. Russo. I was talking. Mr. Yakabelis, I want to thank you for your leadership and bringing that to us to begin with. And I was very happy to work with you on that, and I'll second your motion right now.
Yes, Deputy Mayor, I'd like to say I wasn't interrupting you. I was simply seconding it as I spoke about it before that, and I've been supportive of doing the mask mandate from the beginning. And I'm supporting Councilor Yakabelis's motion, which we've talked about today, about rescinding it. So I'm not Mr. Russo. I'm Councilor Russo.
And I'm Deputy Mayor Herlock, and you keep calling me Councilor Herlock. So if you really want to go there.
You want to talk about titles. I don't need any. I've had every title you can hold in this town for 22 years.
If I can interrupt, I need some time to read this resolution. You know, that seems to be an issue when things come up out of nowhere. So I just want to make sure that that's stated tonight. And those of you may be looking and think I'm serious. I'm only joking. But I think it's to bring some levity to the conversation based on some of my colleagues' conversation just then.
I've always said, Mr. Cummings, the bar is for votes. So the talk of when we receive, not receive, it's for votes. And you've all been there. That's the nature of it, right? And, you know, we've seen plenty of things introduced last minute and voted on, but certainly, that's the deal. So, Mr. Stafford, I see your hand up. Sorry, it's procedurally and, of course, township pieces that you're dealing with. I know, including mandates in the township building, et cetera, that you have to implement. So please speak to this and.
I really have a point of order question, Mayor, and I'm sure it can be easily addressed by either the movement or the second. Is it the desire that the sunset take effect at 11:59 on the 28th of February or on March 1st, which then would mean folks would not need masks on March 2nd? I'm assuming you mean 11:59 PM, February 28th. However, I defer to you, fellas.
That's what I was seconding, but I defer to Mr. Yakabelis.
That's correct, Mr. Stafford. Thank you.
I ask that question because although I assume, given the motion and the second, that the governing body will take a vote, Mr. Burr needs that information to draft an appropriate resolution. So thank you both.
Any other questions, concerns, or comments?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd just like to bring up one issue at the end of the night. Councilor Herlock keeps referring to me and keeps.
One second, one second.
Let's not do this in public.
Just a second. We have a motion. So in order, in order to, we're speaking to this motion. Otherwise, I'll deem it out of order as the chair. So is Councilman Russo, I'll absolutely come back to you for whatever, but I would certainly note, you know, you can have whatever conversation with another colleague you'd like to on another time. I will just offer. But that said, at least for right now, we've got a motion on the floor. Motion is to have the expiration of the mask mandate for the start of next month. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, concerns, or comments on the motion? Councilwoman Price Abrams.
I mean, we'll take our vote in a second, but I did want to just appreciate that, that it was brought up tonight by my colleagues. You know, I think I had pulled something, and I don't happen to have it in front of me now, but it was with regard to what the governor had put out as to what he's doing with the schools. And Mayor, you might know in more detail what some of that included. But it's really with citing how much is changing and how much we are moving, as others have noted, into the endemic phase. We could, you know, knock wood. Who knows what's going to happen in two weeks? Let's hope that's really the trend and where it's going. But the responsible course, you know, in terms of various kinds of impacts, I think is appropriate that we do, you know, terminate this policy for this time, and we will, of course, stay vigilant as to what is required in the future. So thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And as you noted, I asked it in a way, yeah, the governor has been citing, you know, obviously, the guidance in some of the different platforms has not quite changed yet, right? His does not get reviewed officially until the 7th of next month. But that said, he has been indicating that the rapid increase that we saw with this latest spike around this variant is also, has been followed by, as we've seen in other nations and other places, a rapid decrease, right? So he's pointed to those different dynamics than we've seen in other waves, if you will, and a sharper plateau, if you will, that's also led to us being in a different place than the nation in terms of that. So to your point of what you had alluded to, that's specifically what he's been citing.
Not to belabor this, but just to cite what I was saying, if I could, Mayor, excuse me. The quote, I think, was, "As we move into our new normal and transition from a pandemic stance to an endemic one, there is no longer the need for us to gather at a set time every week." He was speaking with regard to how frequent he will be conducting the updates that he's been doing with the full team. So I just wanted to cite that for the public. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions, concerns, comments on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Next, we will, it's my comments, unless, Councilman Russo, did you really want to speak again? Or can I go to my comment?
Yes, I did. I'm simply asking a question to our town attorney, who's going to address in Councilman, Deputy Mayor Herlock, who said that I should not talk. I don't know what my colleagues think, but all I'm asking is that the Deputy Mayor understand that that title is something I held for four years, as well as four years as mayor, as well as eight years as his own first ward predecessor. And, you know, I was thinking of retiring recently when the seniors quit because they're my friends and neighbors. And I'd like to say that I'm asking them to reconsider what they did. And I'm asking seniors who might want to serve, and we already got two or three of them who actually sent in messages, not new forms, but we have new forms. They're VIF forms, which I know the attorneys worked on with the clerk. And I want to appeal to our 7,000 seniors in town. If you'd like to serve on the SCAC, which is called the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, there is a need for you because those folks who did resign, which I regret, misunderstandings, we certainly want people to advocate. Advocacy is almost understood in every committee. So the Civil Rights Committee Commission will advocate. The People with Disabilities Committee will advocate. Seniors are certainly going to advocate. We can't get into a, you know, fight over what the wording is. So I just want to say this. I'd like all seniors to try to apply, but I want to say this. I'm asking the town attorney, this title continually gets people into conflict, okay? At one point, we were told, you know, we skipped the fourth ward. This was a few years ago, and we didn't fairly distribute the title of Deputy Mayor to all wards. Want to have the town attorney check, can we have more than one Deputy Mayor? It's an awful lot to do to help the mayor. Other towns have two Deputy Mayors. Can we have a rotation of Deputy Mayor among all the town council members, even in wards? I held it for four years as an at-large. Can we look into this? Was the resolution appointing the current Deputy Mayor done with a time limit or an end date or open-ended? I want to see us avoid problems. I don't have to be anything Deputy Mayor. I don't need to be that. I was mayor. I just want to see everybody work together and respect each other. So if the town attorney can do a little research on this title and how this is, it just seems to be a ceremonial title. I actually have gone to 10 or 12 ribbon cuttings the last few months and represented the council as an entirety and the mayor. I was the only one at some of them. You can ask to bid. I do go to almost everything, try to help out and represent the town everywhere, all over the state and in the town. I would like to be the Deputy Mayor one more time before I retire, but that's not necessary for me in life. But I don't want to be disrespected. And I ask the town attorney to please look into this title because it seems to cause a lot of frustration among people, past and present. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. I am glad to hear that. I don't want to be disrespected either, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. And certainly, Mr. Burr, I'll let you do that. And note to my colleagues, the language is laid out if you go to our website and ordinances, and certainly it also includes all the legal pieces. You can Google it, and it'll, you search it, it'll come up. You guys can take a look there as well. All right. So specific to a couple of pieces, certainly want to highlight and note, I think, Councilman Schlegel, you highlighted some of the playground pieces. That was a great thing to be at and certainly pleased there. I also want to say, you know, and it's appreciated, as Councilman Russo noted, in terms of us hearing from API and others, and certainly as Councilman Cummings noted, we've heard from a lot of the religious leaders and others who asked for the last resolution to be done forthwith as well. Certainly, I appreciate Councilman Cummings, you know, working on that as well with me. And, you know, want to say that things do matter. Words do matter. Timing does matter. And certainly appreciate the dynamic there, but also our ability to get that done at an appropriate time. And quite frankly, the state to move forward, not an appropriate time, because their appropriate time would have been way sooner than they have been. Do also want to note and certainly, you know, also say that I think that all of us have been focused on, I think unified, in making sure that we have been following the science and supportive of whatever measures to keep residents safe. As I put out in my latest update to residents, we have, you know, seen the number of vaccinations and the percentages increase in Essex County significantly over time. Although I will note, I believe we are currently at 65% of individuals who've received their booster shot. So certainly, we want to make sure we get that number up, you know, and encourage people to do so. But as those numbers increase, and as I noted, put a little asterix there, you'll see high numbers. We've got towns right next door like Glen Ridge and others who might be, I've seen their number. I think it's 120%. And you might ask, how's that possible? It's just New Jersey residents, eligible New Jersey residents that count in the base number. So you see individuals who may not be residents, who may be whatever, who also bump that number up. So as we approach our number, you know, and we see that it's high, know that that's part of it as well. So we do want to make sure we keep all our numbers up. But one of the key pieces always noted is that to have that credibility around mitigation measures as needed, and all options are on the table, you have to continue to follow the science. And when the science calls for more stringent enforcement of pieces to keep people safe, that's what we have to do. And of course, relaxation at appropriate times also. Wanted to specifically, you know, speak to the tenants and others who've called in today. Appreciate your work and efforts. I know how that is ongoing. I certainly, you know, agree fully with what Councilman Russo had noted. I, too, have been, you know, privy to those and heard some of those negotiations in the room. And in terms of what's been done, I'm also mindful that if you go 99% of the way in one direction and the other person won't go 1%, I understand why you would be frustrated and not necessarily want to agree to a deal. So I think we come to the same place, in my opinion. Hopefully, we do reach a resolution, and everybody's hopeful of that. And if not, I think voters will determine if they are supportive of something that gives those in town an ability to stay here and ensure our diversification, both socioeconomically and otherwise, which I think is so important. So we'll see that piece moving as well as to where that goes, and hopefully, we see a resolution there. And I'll just lastly say, you know, to Mr. Scannellberry, thank you so much, as Councilman Yakabelis noted, putting together that document for us on the traffic studies that were done. And as I have asked already, Mr. Scannellberry, and certainly we hope that you do, that for every individual who's reached out and asked for those studies and initiated that through the council or colleague, you know, either the wards or any one of us, that that information is replied to them. I think a lot of times, we know that they are unaware that the results have come back in. So that information does have to be shared out appropriately, and hope you would be able to do that and do so moving forward, as we've discussed. Also, want to note to residents there, along those ones, the challenge around that is the state and federal government have specific rules around literally what warrants, in their word, warrants, use of some of these traffic calming measures and specifically four-way stop signs, et cetera. In that regard, you know, there's a criteria that's done. It's number of vehicles, its speed, its accident reports, et cetera. And they then determine, did it warrant, does it warrant some type of action? If it doesn't, they preclude us from doing so because you'd have in towns, you know, four-way stop signs everywhere, as an example, or not. So those are, you know, relatively cut and dry. And I think it's important that that information is conveyed, that process is conveyed and information once it's obtained is returned to those who've requested it forthwith. So I wanted to give a little insight into that as well, because we had some questions there. So with that, want to thank everybody. We've got a stretch. We've got a few meetings in a row, which means that, you know, if we can get through some of these pieces in a little bit of a quicker fashion, which I think we have generally today. I know there were some people who were, I think, making some friendly wagers on what time we'd end. I'm looking at the clock right now to see if I can cash in on somebody's time by stalling a little bit, but I don't think it's going to be worth it. So with that, I will say to everybody, thank you so much. Appreciate you tuning in, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night. Bye-bye.
Have a good night, everybody.
Night.